Glad you can be here. Today, I've got a few things to cover, but then after me it'll go Kim and then it'll be Chris and then Angie will wrap up with her motivational speaking. So, just want to give you a quick update on a couple of items. First of all, is the childcare, the Childhood Development Center. Haven't made a whole lot of progress on that since the last time we talked. So, where we are with it, Childhood Development Center is going to run us about $2.2 million. I've got $1.1 million promised from the Robertson County Trust. I have $500,000 promised from the Stokes Brown Foundation. And we asked the drawn foundation to close that other $7 million, or $700,000 gap. They came back this year. They were not able to do anything this year, but they've asked us to resubmit for next year. So what that means is we're, we need at least another year before we're going to be able to build this thing. The reason that I'm uncomfortable going out to the community to try and do a fundraising effort for this is, I know that the hospital provides care for them. I know that they care about the employees of this hospital in terms of the community. But it's a big ask to ask the community for $700,000 when none of their children can actually go to the Childhood Development Center. So, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I don't know that we'd be very successful in that fundraising effort. And $700,000 is too big of an ask to do something like an employee campaign as well. So I gotta get this thing narrowed down. It's going to take another year to do it, but I have not given up on it. We're gonna get that thing done. And so, that's kind of my update on that. Let's talk about Pleasant View for a second. If y'all have gone out to Pleasant View recently, I know it still looks like a whole lot of dirt out there, but the building is coming up. We will still be, the completion of that should be in the August, September timeframe, at which point we'll move Dr. Pennington out of his current location and move him into the new medical office building, which then allows us in the December-January timeframe to be able to open the joint ventured walk-in clinic with Vanderbilt. That'll be our first true joint venture that we've done with them, and it'll be a co-branded building, co-branded sign, so it'll actually be the Northcrest brand and it'll be that acorn and oak leaf Vanderbilt brand. We're excited about that. Murray and Williamson Medical Center have both done these with Vanderbilt, and they've been very successful. We're also looking for that strong Vanderbilt brand to assist us in fully developing that waypoint that we've established at Pleasant View between Montgomery County and us. So, just, you know, further forays into that. Plus Pleasant View is a growing population. They have, if you've been out there recently, they've also surveyed the road, so they are moving ahead with the widening of the road in between Pleasant View and Ashland City. So we're about to see a pretty, pretty strong growth in that area. I think we've got it timed right, so we're excited about that. Had mentioned the brand, but let's talk about branding for a second. So you should've seen in the newsletter and then a lot of the changes that are coming out, including on your shirts that we're giving out, the Northcrest Health logo. So, let's just be real specific about that. We are not rebranding Northcrest Medical Center. We're not rebranding Northcrest Physician Services or anything like that. The entities stay the same, but what we're looking for with Northcrest Health is a new mechanism to go out. It's like the social media, it's on the outwardly facing community initiatives and programs that we do, to have a new brand for that. Because we're actually more than just a medical center. We're more than our physicians, we're more than orthopedists, you know, that's, we are doing a whole lot of things in terms of community education that we're doing, our diabetes prevention program, our partnerships that we have with the Y. I would say the yearbook ads that we place and the ball sign, the ball field signs that are out there, we're doing a whole lot of things. And so, Northcrest Health is that mechanism to be able to advertise all those things that we're doing out there. So again, I don't want to portray it as a rebranding of the hospital. That's not what it is. It is a, it's a mechanism to relaunch ourselves to this community in all the different services that we provide it, instead of just being a bricks and mortar something. So, that's the intent there. Finally, just, just because everybody seems to ask in every town hall meeting about how Houston County Hospital is doing out in Erie, Tennessee, we are still working with them. Of all the things that we laid out to them that they needed done in terms of higher level of management, revenue cycle work, supply chain, drug expense, all these different things, and achieve critical access hospital status, we've done all those. So, critical access hospital status is basically complete. The only thing we're waiting right now is Medicare to process their new number. There's no other work to be done on that. We did meet with their board and let them know, there's no other tricks to be pulled. This is what this hospital is. They have to now determine as a county if that's okay. If they can continue to afford the loss that the hospital's operating under. We're working to get them a new administrator that's actually hired by Houston County. We're trying to attempt to move ourselves to a consultant role, as opposed to an actual operational team role. But they've got to decide. And so, they're at a little bit of a crossroads. They're going to have to make the determination, are they going to fund the loss of that hospital going forward? Or, as a consultant, do we need to help close that hospital? So, that's where they are. We've been there for almost two years. We've done what we can do. And so now, it's just a matter of time for, it's the time for Houston County to take it the rest of the way, or make that final ultimate decision. So, not necessarily a fun thing for them, not a fun thing for us. We put a lot of time, effort, and energy into it, so I really do hope that they continue supporting it and moving forward. But we're going to actually support that county regardless of whichever way they decide to go. Any questions about any of those things?
Good afternoon. Y'all enjoying Hospital Week? Everybody get their tee shirt? Night, I love that logo, don't y'all? That's pretty cool, isn't it? Well, one of the things I want to talk to you about is your Employee Advisory Council. Anybody on that committee in here? Okay, then we get to talk about them. Just kidding, they're recording us. Ah, see, raise your hand. There's one. Do you know how to contact them if you want to offer suggestions? Okay, so let's talk about the ways you can contact them. Through the email column, or you can put it in a suggestion box. And I'm going to move it this way a little bit, so you don't have to work, look around that. You can put it in the suggestion boxes where the star cards are, if you want to remain anonymous. Those are the multiple ways you can contact them. They are located on the internet, so if you want to go through Northcrest internet, you can see who they are, their email address, and their telephone number, so that you can contact them. So what are we supposed to do? Well, the Employee Council is supposed to be a shared governance with Leadership Team. And what they're rolling out here soon in June is the new attendance policy. And that went through the Employee Council. They did their review of it, Leadership reviewed it, and now it'll come to Senior Leadership and we'll review it, and then we'll roll it out to you in June. So, as you go through your day-to-day, as you look at processes, as you hand off to other departments, if you see improvements that need to be made, that's how we start getting this done. Notify them, offer those suggestions. Just, you don't even have to offer like the solution, just say, "This is a problem. How do we fix it?" And it takes multiple peoples and multiple departments to be able to do that. That's what they're there for. That's what we want them to do. And then as people roll off, because you know, we wear them out on that council, you have the opportunity to get on there too, if you'd ever like to. One of the things we've got going forward, if you miss the 10 o'clock, we have the Million Mile Group got their awards of all the miles that they had run or walked, or however Lord they did that. And they walked upright when they came up here, and they didn't hurt their knees, so I was impressed with them. But they got their awards today. So our wellness that we're trying to, not trying, that we are doing with Northcrest is doing really well. And there's a couple of other things that are going on. So you'll see those emails from Valerie about how you can plug in and what you can do. We have Weight Watchers going on right now. Do you know how much they've lost? That group has lost so far. You might want to throw out a number. I tell you, it's a person.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty. I think it's, I'm rounding that, it's 146. That's a person, they have shoved a person off of their bodies, and look at what they've done. You can do a competition within your department. ED did one here recently. Guess how much they lost as a group? Hundred and fifty. So, we have lost two people, just through weight loss. That's pretty good, isn't it? Valerie sent out an email, I think it was just this week, they're going to start up a new session for Weight Watchers in June, if you want to join. So start thinking about what you can do with that. We've met with Aetna, who is our insurance, our, we're self-insured, and the wellness that we've been working on, you can tell that it's really starting to pay off. So we've seen an improvement, and y'all know what I mean by improvement, don't you? More proper utilization, which means what? Less expense. It is based on a calendar year, so we're looking at 17 to 16. We're seeing substantial decreases in those areas. So we're really excited about that. Because you know, if we're going the other way, what that means? Well then, there's less dollars to go around for other things that we want to do. Now, we still have some utilization issues that we've targeted, but we know that with this wellness and with education, we're going in the right direction with our health insurance. A lot of people can't say that. They just can't. Oh, and starting, talking about plugging in, this is a plugin for our Family Wellness Night, is May 25th at the Y from 6 to 8. And it is a bring your family and your friends, if you have any. And then, Culture Club. So do you know who puts on our Hospital Week? Our Employee Picnic, our Employees Appreciation Day? Do you know who all does that? It's the Culture Club. So the Culture Club is looking for new people. Jennifer Helwig is the one who is our captain of that Culture Club. So if you would like to participate, we would love to have you. And we have more fun things planned for tomorrow. Tomorrow Alan is doing our lunch, so he's the grill master. We like it when he cooks for us. And then Thursday, I think we have treats again for you. So thanks for attending, thanks for lifting us up. That's our theme. I still haven't seen that movie, by the way.
That afternoon. All right, so what you're feeling right now at 4:00 in the afternoon, we started this first one, what, at 7:30 this morning? So 7:30 this morning, it was so much passion and so much energy, and we're going to try to reproduce that for you this afternoon at 4:00 on our fourth go-around of this. It's always a challenge. So I'm going to start with a little bit of an apology in the way I sound. I have something between the black plague and allergies, I'm not sure which. You can tell me later, those of you that are clinically inclined. And I'll also tell you thank you for the feedback that I got after last quarter's town hall. So very many of you reached out personally and through email to say that you had chosen excellence in your own lifestyle here at Northcrest Medical Center after that, and I'm very appreciative of sharing that. If you did not share that with me, or you did not share that with one of your peers, that you chose excellence, you are not alone. Many people did, and I just want to tell you thank you for that. Thank you for that feedback. So, I do want to give you a little bit of update on what's been going on. Last time we were together, we talked about Harmonicas for Health, probably talked about it at length, as a matter of fact. And I'm glad to tell you that right now, that's into four senior centers, from Springfield to Ashland City to Clarksville to Orlando, and actually working with an assisted living facility in Clarksville, it's a large assisted living facility on Patel Way called Fieldstone. As a matter of fact, they gave our name, gave my name and cellphone number, to a gentleman with the Parkinson's Foundation, and I've spoken to him, and they are looking at, we're using harmonicas for the folks that are having breathing difficulty with Parkinson's. So it's just a phenomenal opportunity for us as a leader in healthcare to once again promote good care while promoting the cause of Northcrest Medical Center. That's true also in our opioid abuse prevention that we're leading here in the county and frankly in others. It's also true with our civic and our civil organizations and the support and relationships that we're building through the Health Council, through the local civic groups, and even particularly Robertson County Schools. And I do want to highlight them, I think they've really been a partner with us as of late and are working very hard to make sure that we're able to co-brand and co-promote the quality that goes on in Robertson County. One of the things that has come up here in the last two months is NAMI. Is anybody familiar with NAMI? It's the National Association of Mental Illness. They're looking to change their name actually to National Association for Mental Wellness. And Mr. Tony Cowan, I don't know if any of you remember Tony. Tony was around for a long time, just a great gentleman. He's actually starting that chapter here in Robertson County, we're proud for him. And so many of us are affected by mental illness in our families, whether it's ourselves or our family members. And he is starting a family support group that's actually going to be held here on campus. And so that's just the types of partnerships and relationships that we're really trying to build to promote Northcrest Health. So, in light of that, I thought I would take a minute and give us three small, easy points for mental wellness that we can all do, right? We all know we should run like 18 miles a day or something and eat like 400 calories for wellness, right? At least that's what they tell me. But mentally, we don't think about it a whole lot. And the reality is, I'm going to talk to you, it's going to make us a little anxious, at least it's going to make me a little anxious here in just a second. And mental wellness is something that we can do every single day, right? Three things. First thing is this, laugh. Okay? If you can't laugh, smile, right? It makes a difference in your life and a difference in the life of others, and it helps you to maintain your own attitude as well. If you can't do either one of those, do this. Refuse to complain about anything for 21 days straight, even if you should complain about it. You know what I mean? Like if you go through the line at McDonald's and you say, "I need a cheeseburger with ketchup only," and the only thing you get on the bun is ketchup, you should complain about that, right? I mean, right, that's happened to all of us, if you've got kids. But don't complain about it. 21 days straight. See how your life changes and see how the lives of the people around you change as well. It's a great attitude adjuster. Second thing, really easy, clean your room. And no, I'm not an angry dad talking to my 20-year-old son because his room smells like feet. It still does. He hasn't been in it in a year and a half, it still smells like feet. I can't help it, I don't know what to do about it, I guess we'll fumigate. But we lose control so very often. We're involved in healthcare. Things change every single day, and they change at national levels, state levels, county levels, and here on Tom Austin Highway. Mr. Davis just got back from Washington DC where he was advocating for us on what happens here at Northcrest Medical Center in our county on a national level. But the reality is, is we're not going to change the national policies. Gives us a little loss of control, right? You can find many instances of that throughout our lives where we feel a loss of control. Makes us anxious, gives us a little more stress, makes it more difficult in our relationships, more difficult in our own productivity. But we can control many things. Make your bed. You can control that. From there, clean your room. We can control that. It's harder than it seems to do it every single day. From there, maybe it's control what you can control at work. So like when we talked about, "Don't complain for 21 days straight," how many of us thought about our neighbor? Not ourselves, right? You know you did. You know you did. I see you laughing, I know you did it, right? So here's the deal. Control what you can control. Don't control your neighbor, control you. And see the difference that it makes for your anxiety levels, your stress levels, see what kind of increase in productivity and just quality of life it has for you, but also in those around you. Because like laughter and like a smile, every bit of this is infectious. Truly is. All right, so that's enough preaching for the afternoon. Three easy things. What are they? What's the first one? Laugh, laugh, smile. If you can't smile, just don't complain for 21 days, right? Try that, it's amazing. What's the second thing? You don't remember it. Clean your room. Clean your nasty room. We all got a little nasty room to clean up, we know we do. And what's the third thing? We don't know yet, I haven't told you. Have a purpose in life, okay? Have a purpose in life. This is the most important. We are meant and built to work under a load. We are meant and built to have a purpose in life. If you don't know yours, find it. It doesn't matter what it is. I talked to one of our senior patients not too long ago, her purpose in life is to take care of her front landscape, and it's her flower beds. That's every day. She knows that she's got that purpose to make sure she does that. Yours may not be flowers, maybe it's children, maybe it's grandchildren, maybe it's a dog, maybe it's another kind of pet, maybe it's anything, maybe it's a patient, maybe it's the people we serve here. I hope some of that is. I hope that's true. But have a purpose in your life and know what that purpose is and work towards it. Those three things together will help you to lead a higher quality life. All right, now I'm done preaching, promise, promise. I'll tell you my purpose right now, okay? They're apt to change. But my purpose right now is to develop revenue generating opportunities through new and existing lines of service, through effectively communicating the quality experience of Northcrest Medical Center and Northcrest Physician Services to internal and external customers. That's my passion. You've heard that mission before, right? You're going to hear it again, I hope. The reality is that we have an opportunity to expand the quality that we give to this county, to a larger area, and we're continuing to do that. So I'd ask you, if you don't know what your purpose is and you want to join in on one, join that one. Join that one. All right, so let me give you a little update about what's going on. We talked about partnering with our, with our community partners and partnering with other shepherds of people. June the 6th, we've got a Coaches Academy coming up at Highland Crest with the Robertson County School System for all middle and high school coaches. Great opportunity to partner to continue our sports medicine program. And, just take care of our kids, man. They're important. They're important. We hope that that can continue to expand, and maybe next year, that includes little league coaches as well. So that we're catching them younger and younger and younger where we can identify problems and make sure that our shepherds of people have got the education that they need. Clarksville growth is going to continue. I think Mason's here, glad he's here today. What percentage of orthopedic surgeries came out of Clarksville last month?
For Dr. Clark, it was over 51%, 2%.
Yeah.
He had more surgeries than I Clarksville.
In Springfield. Lot of surgeries coming out of Clarksville for orthopedics. And they are right on track from a volume perspective, so thank you for that. It's great work. Dr. Westricham, as I understand, is continuing to grow in that Clarksville market. I will tell you that we've seen growth out of the general surgery market from Clarksville, but we feel like there's probably another 20 surgeries a month that actually could come out of there. We'll keep working on that, okay? Another thing that you're going to see us work on in the next little bit of time is what's called client-specific networks, or you may hear them called a tiered-one network. Here's what this means. What this is actually talking about is us working with independent businesses so that through their medical benefit design, they have the opportunity to incentivize their employee to use Northcrest Health Services. Okay? You may say, "Why would they do that?" Does anybody know? Take a guess. Why would they do that? Why would employer want their people to use us?
Cost savings.
Cost savings. Absolutely cost savings. And in healthcare, what drives cost savings?
Higher quality.
Higher quality. Higher quality, low-cost care. When you don't get readmitted, that costs less money. When you don't have a surgical site infection, that costs less money. When you've got appropriate access to care, that costs less money. When you're on the right medicines, that costs less money because you're less episodic. We've started talking about this eight, nine years ago. The reality is, is that the costs of care had not risen enough for employers to really engage in that project. They have now. They have now. They're to unsustainable levels. So we have that opportunity to work with these individual businesses and provide that value back to this county. I'm going to talk to you about something else, and I need your attention. And I need your help. We're going to talk about EMS transfers a little bit, okay? Our emergency room January through March of this year were 6.6% down in volume. Inpatient admissions are down 4.5%. I will tell you that in the month of April, 112 ambulance rides from citizens of Robertson County went outside of the county to another facility. Seems like a lot, right? Stick with me on these numbers for a minute. 112. It's going to sound like more in just a second. That is 30% of the total deliveries from Robertson County EMS. So 30% of the business that was picked up by our EMS service went outside the county. I have a problem with that. You may be asking yourself, "Why would that occur?" This is the two reasons that we've heard. That we've heard. One, if we take them to Northcrest Emergency Room, we're just going to have to take them somewhere else for higher acuity. The second is the patient wanted it. I want to address both today. The first one. Over the last 22 months or so, the percentage of patients that came to the Northcrest Emergency Department that had to be transferred out for higher acuity care is 1.76%. 30% of our patients drove by us to another facility, yet 1.76% that came to our ED had to be transferred out. Our job in an emergency room is get you where you need to for the best care, right? We're going to transfer you out if you need that care. That's our job. We're going to stabilize your triage, make sure what's happened, where you need to be for the best care, your best chance of life and quality life, get you where that is. Overwhelmingly, that's here for our county. Yet in April, 112 people, 30% of the total, went outside of our county for care. I will tell you that overwhelmingly, when we do transfer someone out of our emergency room for higher care, for higher acuity care, that goes to Vanderbilt and Centennial. Because they have the subspecialties we don't have, right? Yet overwhelmingly, the number of patients that are bypassing us through Robertson County EMS are going to Skyline. We transfer very little to Skyline. Why? Because they don't really have anything we don't have. So that addresses number one. Number two, I believe in patient choice. I'm a resident of Robertson County, I've been a longtime resident of Robertson County, I raised my kids here. If I don't want to come here anymore, I don't want to come here anymore. I mean, that's just true, right? So if, I have an event at my house, God forbid, and they come to pick me up, and I say, "Nope, you take me to Skyline." I don't want to go to Northcrest. Janice is mean to me. I don't want to go, okay? That's on me. I get to do that. But, since this is a Robertson County EMS, the patient should be billed for the mileage from Northcrest to Skyline. I should be billed for that. That's my choice. Because as a resident of Robertson County, I'm paying taxes for that facility to run. And I believe in a couple of things. One, Northcrest Health and the entities involved with Northcrest Medical Center, Northcrest Physician Services, Northcrest Foundation, and everything else that goes on here with the quality people that go on here, raise the quality of life for Robertson County. And that's a fact. Two, I don't want to pay for HCA or for Skyline itself to be profitable. I'm not okay with that. Not okay with it. So, here's where I need you, okay? It's an election year. It's coming up, August. Early voting starts in July. County Commissioners, County Mayor are all up. I'm going to tell you that as a resident of Robertson County, my vote is going to go to the individual that has the best care in mind for Robertson County and the individuals that are going to support you in your mission of providing care for the citizens of this community. And I would ask for your vote to be the same. If you don't know your county commissioners and who's running, we can help with that. If you're not registered to vote, we can help with that. Have a conversation. Find out if they support what you're doing here in this community, because I think that's important. I know it makes a difference in people's lives here, okay? So I'm going to ask you for that today. It's important. It makes a difference. To put this in light, over 22 months, 110 on average going outside the county, if we just impacted that 10%, not from 30 to 10, but if we just got 10% of what went out, that's 11 roughly, 11 inpatient admissions per month. Let's just call it 130 per year. At our average length of stay, that's 500 patient days. What's that do to your staffing? What's that do to us? Makes all the difference in the world. By the way, it takes that 4.5% decrease to a 4.6% increase over last year. That's the kind of difference that we're talking about. If that's not meaningful, I really, I don't know what it is, because it impacts our friends and our neighbors that live here. All right? I like to end with a "ooh." I think I've done that. I've absolutely satisfied that. Alright, I'll answer anything for you or tell you I don't know. What questions do you have? Nothing? Yes, ma'am?
I will say that too, I also hear patients say that they wanted to come to Northcrest and felt no reason why they're there.
I've heard that as well. I've heard that as well. I have story after story after story after story of that. They're more anecdotal. It's hard for me to put data around that, but I've heard that. I've heard it a lot. Heard it a lot. Alright, so, are we going to leave out of here and beat up an EMS worker? Absolutely not. No, no. If you're going to beat them with something, beat them with a little love, right? Let them know the quality work that goes on here. Let them know how important that they are to the success of this entire county, because Northcrest Medical Center, Northcrest Health, and those entities absolutely drive this county.
Something else I wanted to point out is that we just received the Leapfrog Score of A for the 13th consecutive time. It's one thing to get the award, but to maintain it over those years. Truly a great testament to the quality of care that we deliver here. So, y'all, I know when to say "y'all" and "ain't" and all that, but we're amongst friends, so I'm going to talk just like we're all friends, because we're going to laugh. I'm going to make y'all laugh. So, you know, when I had my razor phone, you know, the little razors that just slid in your pocket and had really good reception, and I had to give it up for BlackBerry because everybody was texting, and people would put LOL on there, and I would be like, "Well, I love you too," because I thought it was lots of love. And see, Sarah did too. And somebody in one of the earlier groups said that somebody that they knew had passed away, and her sister had put LOL, and got really, some really bad feedback over that. So, now we know that it means LOL. It does not mean lots of love. So, let's talk about laughter. So, laughter. Research shows that laughter is a potent drug with contagious power of a virus that conveys a slew of benefits for the mind and the body. Laughter decreases stress hormones and increases immune cells and infection-fighting antibodies and improves your resistance to disease. It is a potent endorphin releaser, and we all know that those endorphins make us feel good, and they're the chemicals that produce a sense of euphoria. So, it's much like a narcotic, but so we can decrease that opiate usage just by laughing, Laughter is contagious. When you're feeling down and you find friends to laugh with that can help your brain trigger its own laughter response and foster closeness, both of which contribute to your sense of well-being. One study showed women laugh about 126% more than their male counterparts, while men seem to instigate laughter the most. As Mr. Davis pointed out earlier, that means we're laughing at men. Women rate a sense of humor as a top trait for potential mate, and men rate women who laugh a lot higher than those that don't. But both agree that laughter is non-negotiable, and laughter contagiously forms social bonds. Laughter reduces the stress response. So, it increases blood flow and oxygenation. It stimulates the heart and lungs. It triggers more of those endorphins. Laughter protects your heart. Hardy laughter should be a part of any heart disease prevention program. So, we've been talking about employee wellness and community wellness, so we all just, you know, we need to laugh more as part of our wellness. According to one study done at the Indiana State School of Nursing, mirthful laughter may increase natural killer cell levels, a type of white blood cell that attacks cancer cells. We have a picture of Ms. Kim Pridgen up here, and I'm just going to tell you, she has a mirthful laugh. I love to hear Ms. Kim laugh. It's just a very joyous sound. I try to make her laugh as much as I can, and when she laughs, sometimes she cries, and I get that like a double win. It increases resilience. Resilience is the ability to see failure as a natural progression to success. The ability to acknowledge mistakes without becoming angry or frustrated plays an important role in developing resilience. Laughing appropriately at mistakes allows us to recognize that making errors is a part of being human. So, that's one thing about senior administration, what we like to laugh, we like to have fun, and we want everybody to laugh and have fun when they're at work. We think it should be a joyous time. It's not always joyous, but laugh when you can. So, part of that is telling on yourself, so I'm just going to tell a story, and yes, I realize it's on video. But, so, y'all, I have my little waxing thing I do every Saturday. Like, I have to wax my eyebrows and stuff, you know? So, I have my own little wax kit. I got it at Sally's, and like, I am, I've got it. But it's really hard to cross over and do this eyebrow. This one's pretty good, but that one's really hard to cross over and do. Well, so, I rip my little strip off and take off half my eyebrow. So, I'm missing half an eyebrow. This is a true story. I've got pictures on my phone. I just showed Chris. That's what me and Chris were giggling about. So, and it's Saturday. This eyebrow's not going to grow back by Monday, and I have to come to work. So, I'm in a meeting, so I call Ulta, and I buy one of those sticks, and I draw my eyebrow on, and I come to work. And I come to work, and I'm in a meeting with Kim and Randy and Chris, and I think it was a budget meeting or something, and I go, "Oh." And I looked down, and my eyebrows on my hand, and I looked up at them, and I said, "I'm missing half my eyebrow, aren't I?" And they started laughing. Well, needless to say, the meeting was over, because nobody could look at me with a straight face after that, because I didn't have the pencil to draw my eyebrow back on. But what, so what did I learn from that? I learned, number one, I can laugh about myself with other people. I think that that's something that everybody can laugh at, but I also learned to get better at waxing. Me and Mr. Miyagi got it going on. Yeah, wax on, wax off. So, laughter also combats depression. Laughter, studies support that laughter is a great way to combat depression, and even forced laughter releases a cocktail of hormones, neuropeptides, and dopamine that can start to improve your mood. Laughter relieves pain. So, it doesn't actually make you not have pain. It helps you forget that you have pain. But isn't that great? Bring laughter to your life. Make humor a priority by reading a funny book, watching comedy, or listening to your favorite comedian. Share laughter with friends. Spend some more time with people who have fun. Practice laughter yoga. Remember that life is funny, and the ability to laugh at yourself makes you better and helps you relieve your own stress. Focus on finding a laughable moment in your day, like your eyebrow. If it tells friends your funny story, it's a way to increase your power of laughter by sharing, and I've shared with all of you my funny story. Know what isn't funny, though. Laughing at the expense of others isn't funny. Be discerning about your humor by laughing with, not at people, so when they fall down, don't laugh until you know they're okay. And we all do that. Mason, look, come on, Mason. You laugh at people who fall down too, right?
I tell a story myself, so we had, I slipped and fell, and the worst part about it was I couldn't get up because I was still so slick.
Oh!
I tell a story myself. I'm sitting there laughing as hard as I can, trying to get up, cracking up on myself.
See, we should just have a town hall that's like True Confessions of Funny Stories.
We should not do that. That should not be, that should not happen.
And we could listen to Kim giggle. Your ability to laugh can be cultivated with practice, so start by prioritizing fun. Find occasions to be silly. Remember laughter, like smiling, is never depleted when you share it. Smile and laugh so people wonder what you're up to. Y'all, I got all these pictures off the F-drive, off the shared drive, and I just randomly went through and picked out some pictures of people that were laughing and having a good time, and y'all know that like 10 years from now, somebody's going to be looking at those pictures and saying, "What were they doing?" And, you know, it's from one of our employee things where they're trying to shake the bulbs out of the Kleenex box. So, next month will mark my 31st year at Jason Homon Jones Northcrest Medical Center, and I can tell you that like every decade, I'd say, "Wow, 10 years ago, those were the good old days. That was great. We had fun." And I say that every 10 years. So, what I'm trying to tell you is, laugh today, because these 10 years from now, this